Okay, we are going to call the meeting to order. Our February 22nd, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting. This was a big day in elementary schools, two, 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 two. It was a day of twos. Like to have the approval of the agenda if we could and additions or omissions to the agenda tonight. Go ahead, Richard. You're muted, Richard.
I'm always muted. So I like to work. Write a letter to the Department of Highways, asking them a question. I had a citizen approach me. The do with the Forbes's Road in Argylehead. So I'd like to know what Department of Highways intentions are for that road. He had heard that they were not going to service it any longer. And they just put a new bridge up in that road two years ago. So he didn't know what was going to happen, but it leads to what we always called the the Kelps Lodge. It's a big lodge up back at Argylehead. So I'd like to give an answer from the department. There's no, you can't get nothing going online or trying to call them. So a letter coming from us may help me make, let us know what their intentions are. Is that clear enough?
We'll put that under for decision, 66E. That's okay?
Yep.
Okay. I saw somebody else, Councilor Diggden.
Thank you. I'd like to possibly bring up or at least talk about the flying of the Acadian flag at the municipality's office in Tuskegee.
Okay. So we would put that under. Probably for information. That that sound okay?
By all means. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, any other additions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, can we have somebody move to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Do we have a seconder? Okay, seconded by Councilor Diggden. All those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand. Contrary. Motion carried. Do we have any conflict of interest declarations for tonight? Okay, seeing none, we're going to continue on. Number three, there are no presentations tonight. So we'll move on to number four, adoption of minutes. Regular council meeting, February 8th, 2022. So is somebody willing to move those minutes? Thank you, Council of Work. Do we have a second or Councilor Sonia? Any questions on that? Go ahead, Councilor Sonia.
Yes, there was a motion passed for, I'll read it. It says, move by Deputy Warden Albright and seconded by Counselor Burke to enter into an agreement to own portion of Mariner Center operations. We're not owning just operations, are we? Is that, that seems a little.
No.
Not quite right to me.
I think part of it is we funded. I think it's, it's about our, an agreement. I know what you're saying. It's an agreement on how we're going to deal with the operations, but we're entering an agreement for ownership of the Mariner Center. So maybe we could clarify that. Would you be okay with that clarification, Councilor Sonia?
Sure, because it mentions operations and we're going beyond operations. We're going with ownership of the.
Ownership. Okay, does that sound okay with everybody? Okay, so with that amendment. Can we, is the mover and seconder okay with that amendment to the minutes? Okay. All right, so all those in favor signify by raising your hand or saying aye. Contrary. Motion carried. Next, we have business arising from the minutes. Is there anybody who would like to bring anything up from that? There's nothing on the agenda, but. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. Number six for decision. Six A, CSAP Education Act. So we had, there are two attachments on the agenda. One is an email that was circulated to council. Basically stating the intention. The other attachment was information regarding the CSAP and. Their request. So basically, the CSAP. In 2018, when changes happened in the, in the school board. So when the, the English School Board was abolished, the CSAP, that school board stayed, continued on. They were kind of promised that, so the English School Board in 2018, they, they were kind of governed by, the Department of Education is governing them. And the CSAP was kind of promised, because of the language piece and the cultural piece, that they would have their own kind of education act as well. So right now, things haven't moved ahead. And they're kind of awaiting, they're basically awaiting a decision to be made that seems to be stalled. So they basically want to have an education act for themselves that is, is. It's, it follows the charter. So it's, it's, it's preserving the language and the cultural piece. And it's, it's been stalled. So they're looking for a letter from us to kind of support what they're looking to see happen. So they'd like us to reach out to the premier, they'd like us to reach out to our MLA. So that's kind of the direction that that request is going in. What is the wish of council? Any comments on that one? Councilor Burke.
Yes, thank you Deputy Warden. I think we should write a letter to the Department of, well, to the Department of Education or Minister and CCR MLA. I did speak to our MLA about it. I did reach out to people, Janelle Dontrama, just to see what, exactly what was what, and to understand what was going on. So she, Janelle explained to me exactly the way you had said. And so, and MLA Colton, he has said that they're going to be looking, meeting with CSAP in the spring. So there, it's on, it's on the horizon to, they're looking into it. But I think there's a lot of work to be done yet by the government, by the provincial government. So, but I think we should support the CSAP to send a letter to, to try to push this on, because they were promised in 2018 to have their own, their own act. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Siret.
For Kathy's, Kathy's suggestion. Let's be sure that, I see, it says some key people in the federal, provincial and governments that should be sent. We should be sure that we add those people if we send a letter, that they'd be added, to be sure they'd be added. Just let's be added to it, to these people. That was the only comment, other comment I had. I agree with Councilor Burke, yes.
Anyone else?
I'll move that we send, I'll move that we send the letter. To, well, the premier and the MLA and whoever else for our support.
Minister of Education was added on that as well.
As well.
Is there a seconder for that? Thank you, Councilor Son, no. Okay, question. Councilor Siret, you're going to second it? Thank you, okay. Questions, go ahead, Councilor Sonia.
My own, my only concern is I anticipate a few questions from the public. And, and so what, what they're trying to accomplish on paper here is to have an equal balance with, with the French Board and the English to each be treated the same. Is that, is that basically, in a nutshell, what it is?
That's basically, in a nutshell, what it is. And, but highlighting the fact that our cultural and language issues are different than the English Board. So they, I guess, from what I read, they're, they want, they feel like they're looking for a uniform, one system for everybody, but that's not what they were promised. They were promised that the CSAP would have kind of their own, their own act, so that it would ensure that there was the protection of language and culture. And some movement was made on that, but it just, it hasn't been kind of continued and pushed through. So that's what they're requesting. They just want the work that they started to continue on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
No, I just, before I made the motion, I saw Councilor Dontrama with his hand up. So I don't know if he had a comment or.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Dontrama.
I was just going to ask Councilor Kathy Book if she was going to make the motion. I was going to second it, but everybody beat me to the punch, which is fine. How I'm voting, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye or raising your hand. Contrary. Richard, you're contrary? No, okay. It might be a delay. All right, that happened the other night with Ward News. All right, motion carried. Thank you, I just want to be sure. All right, thank you. Next, we have. Under six B, the low income tax exemption. So we have an attachment there. So in the past, and kind of for new counselors more than anything, we've done this in the past where we have a threshold that we have numbers for low income tax exemptions. So if, if a person makes under a certain amount of income, then they have this either $200, $150 or $100 of a tax exemption on their tax bill. So the first chart in, in green is the chart that shows us how many people benefited from the low tax exemption. So for the $200, we had 32 people. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Scott or Kyle, 32 people who benefited for $150 off their taxes. We had 64 people who benefited and $100 off the taxes. We had 16 people who benefited and. Tax bill under $100, there was one person who benefited, et cetera, et cetera. So every year, we kind of look at this, these numbers and we, we decide whether the numbers are, you know, how are we going to keep them the same, that kind of thing. So if you look underneath the green chart, there's a yellow chart. So they've, the staff has revamped kind of the numbers according to policy. And, and the way that they felt that was the most appropriate was anybody making or under $19,500 could qualify for a $200 tax exemption. $25,800, $150 tax exemption and $29,000, $100 tax exemption. So this is up for discussion and consideration for our upcoming taxation year. So are there any questions or comments on that? We're hoping, it's possible that we move this tonight if, if we can, if people are in agreement with this. Are there any questions or comments on it? Go ahead, Councilor Burke.
I have no questions. I would like to move the suggested, the new amounts given for the tax exemptions.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder on that? Councilor Diggden, thank you. Sorry, Councilor Dontrama. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand or saying aye. Contrary. Motion carried. There is a delay, Richard, with you. I think it's your internet. So I'm going to give you an extra couple of seconds there, just to be sure. All right, next. I have two on the go because my, my internet isn't fenced. Isn't phenomenal either. Okay, we have 60 Eelbrook Fire Department Rate Payers Meeting Minutes. So there's an attachment of three pages. So last week, they had a rate payers meeting. So in the past, well, and again, for new counselors, when there's a rate payers meeting and a fire department determines their area rate, they have a meeting. And if it's approved at that meeting, then they bring that number forward to us for council to approve as well. So that's what this is. So they had their rate payers meeting last week. And at the rate payers meetings, they determined, they determined three years ago, I believe, that they were going to change their tax rate. And they changed the tax rate in order to help pay for the new building that they're trying to get built. They're in year three of five of that agreement right now. And at the great pairs meeting the other night, they made a decision to, once the five years are up, so in another two years, they're going to extend that rate by another five years. So that money will help go towards the building as well, because there's a shortfall of the amount of money that they have. And it was, it was passed at the rate payers meeting that the, and I think you saw the motion, that the existing area rate of 0.125 for $100 of assessment for an additional five years after the, after the current agreed upon rate is finished. So that it was voted, it was carried, that motion was carried. So it's our job now to decide whether or not we're going to make a motion to agree with them, which we typically do. Is there anybody willing to make that motion? Move by Warden Muse, do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Donaldson. Are there any questions on that? Go ahead, Councilor Siret.
My question is to the, to our warden, Danny. I see you were at the meeting. Danny, was there any rate payers except, I rephrase that, any other than firemen at the meeting?
Yes, there were. But more firemen than, than general public, I would, I would say, yeah.
That's okay. Just wanted to know. I saw you and Janice were there, yeah.
That's right.
Thank you.
And if you've read the minutes, it's because they can't, they can't secure a mortgage until they have secured the funding. And, and, and they, they wouldn't be able to get the, the mortgage unless this is, this is approved by us. That guarantees that they're going to have the money for, for seven years from now.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on that one? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary. Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Number. Six D. Canadian seniors curling championship. We have an attachment of a page. So we had a request from YASTA. If you look, they are looking to, let me just try and summarize this as quickly as I can. So YASTA has secured the 2022 Curling Canada Men's Senior, Senior Men's and Women's Championship for December 5th through the 10th. At the Mariner Center, there will be 150 athletes officials, and then you add on family and friends. Other host cities have shown revenues in, it says one to 1.5 million dollars, lots of hotel rooms, 550 plus nights, hotel rooms. There's a request, we've had requests similar, similar to this before for other events. But what YASTA is asking for is funding $10,000 per YASTA partner. So us being a YASTA partner, they're looking for $10,000 from us to help pay for this event. So are there questions? I know Counselor Dontrama is the board chair for YASTA, so he probably would be able to better answer any questions. Or if you have anything to add, Counselor Dontrama, please feel free to do so. Go ahead. Yep.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, it's for December 2022. In talking with our staff today about this event and the funding and all that, we, we decided that we, it might be better to defer it for, till the next meeting, because we have other ass. Not exactly the same, you know, but special events that are coming up. And we definitely have to look at all of them and try to figure out the finances. Always seems to be the tricky part, figuring out which fiscal year to, you know, get the money from and all that. So tonight, even though, you know, of course, I am, you know, fully committed to this event, I think it'd be more prudent if we put all the, there's a few other assets that are coming down the pipe apparently. And that we look at them all together and try to figure out. Because if, I mean, if we approve this one tonight, then well, less than $1,000, right? So I know that, you know, having said that, that the Bay of Fundy Sea Kayaking Symposium was supposed to happen in September this year. And we usually give $7,500 to, it's not going to be happening this year in 2022. So, you know, that will free up a little bit of money. But anyway, I, I think it's, it's important that we sit down and look at all of them and try to figure out exactly where they're going to all fit. I was, I guess, talking with, with Scott today and it made perfect sense. So, and I've been talking to Neil McKenzie, which is the general manager of YASTA, and told him, gave him the update and how we're going to, and, and YASTA is probably going to play a role in the other events too. So anyway.
Thank you for that. Councilor Siret, did you have something you wanted to add or ask? You're good? Councilor Sonia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calvin, thank you for that. It's, it's good common sense approach you got to that. My question is, I've, I've been involved in events similar to what you guys or the curling. And I know the impact it has, especially on the town of Yarmouth. I, I have a question. I don't know who can answer or if it can be answered by, by council here. Has there ever been an impact study as to what these tournaments have on, on our guile, per se? We all know what it does for Yarmouth and all the money Daddy drops in the hotels and the restaurants and the gas and, and all that. And I totally am for all this. But I'm just wondering what capacity it affects our guile. Has there ever been a study? I, I know that, to add to this, when we do, I say we, when Wedgeport puts on the tuna tournament, it has a great impact on that local economy. But it is in Wedgeport. And most, most of these events, even, even the one for the. Shag Harbor is going to be held in Yarmouth. I'm just wondering, has there ever been a study? An impact study for our guile? And it would be nice if we did have one, it would give us some, some, some idea of how to fund these things. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure, go ahead Calvin. I'm not sure if we have anything specific for our guile, but go ahead, Cal.
I, I'm not sure either, but I guess thinking out loud, I know that we, YASTA hosted the mixed curling. Three, four, or five years ago, I forget how many years. And so I'll reach out to Neil McKenzie again at YASTA and maybe Rick Allright, who was involved to, to see if they having any kind of economic study or whatever, the impact. I'll reach out to them and ask them, but offhand, I don't know. Unless, I think when we had the Jeu d'Acadie, I wonder if there was a, if there was a, impact studies back then. And maybe Scott or somebody might know, maybe, maybe not. I know Alan would, because he would see, at that time, he, he was the one that was taking care of all the finances, so.
Yep. Go ahead, Councilor Sonia.
If I may, I'd just like to add one more point. If, if, if a study was done and it is favorable for our goal in the sense that it benefits our goal and may, might even at some point benefit some, some form of business, which is only beneficial to our goal. Again, I, I, I'm not going to give numbers, but I remember when, when Gary Hanson owned the, the Shopper Carl. There was a significant amount of business being done there at the weekend of the tournament. So I, I, I think, I think that it would be, it would be nice to know and maybe beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Siret.
Councilor Sonia, just I know that. Some of the rent, some of the rental places, the house, the, the vacation rentals and that, they do end up getting people. I know we have one and to a lot of these things, when it was the hockey tournament, it's the, some of the stuff that, like you said, that goes on with this, with this curling. Yes, we do rent. We do have rentals, you know? And probably this is not an impact, Councilor Sonia, but we have a lot of our residents that go in to see this stuff. So that's a benefit to our residents, but it doesn't answer what you asked about the financial impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kyle.
So from my understanding, for events like this, the only studies that have been done have been regional, not our guile specific. But there was one done for the Wedgeport 2 Festival. I don't have the details of that in front of me, but I know that it was, it was very favorable for the municipality of Yarmouth regarding the Wedgeport 2 Festival. We can, we can get that information out to you on that one. But as far as events in the town of Yarmouth, I believe the only studies done were regional studies, not municipality specific.
Thank you. Go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, I'm fully in favor of hosting this event in Yarmouth. I'm a curling fan. I went, seen a lot of the games and they had the mixed curling. But I find, and I'm not going to argue the point here, because we're going to bring it up in the next, next council meeting. But I'm, I'm going to be arguing against giving a third. I mean, it seems to be the common ask, anybody asking for major events taking place in Yarmouth, that they want our goal to pay a third. And we don't benefit a third, and we don't have the tax base to justify doing a third. So that's going to be my argument when we bring it to the table again. But I, but I'm definitely in favor of the event.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we're going to, go ahead, Councilor Dontrama.
Yeah, I guess, so at this time, we'll defer until the next meeting, when we have all the, the information for the other events that are maybe coming down the pipe here. You know, hash it all out, so.
Yes, yeah, that's what I was just about to say, we'll, we'll defer that one.
So do we need a motion to defer?
Do we need a motion to defer?
Usually we.
Let's make a motion. Usually if we, if we're not sure, it's better to make a motion. So is somebody willing to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion with you for the next meeting.
Do we have a seconder on that? Okay, thank you, Councilor Sonia. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary. Motion carried. Thank you. And next, we have. Let me find where I wrote it. E for decision. There, a letter that was Warden Muse, did you, no. Who wanted it?
Counselor Donaldson.
Counselor Donaldson, thank you. Counselor Donaldson, go ahead.
Yes. Yes, I would like to write a letter, I assume, to just our local, local DOT office, asking what their intentions are for the Forbes's Road in Argylehead.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilor Dontrama.
I'll second that. And I'm just wondering, Richard, which road is that? Is that the road that goes? I'm just trying to think, which road is it? Is it just past the Curry Road?
It's just past the Curry Road. The last house in that's a full-time resident would be, he's just like Eman Pamood's brother.
Okay.
Where used to be a smokehouse years ago.
Right, oh, that, where the hat field, where the, the blueberry, blueberries used to be?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyhow, they, they maintain the road and I'm guessing two kilometers in, and then there's a gate, and then it goes to the resort or lodge or whatever's up there. I've never been the whole way up in my life, but I guess it's quite a nice property. So if the, if the Department of Highway stops maintaining the road to their, to their gate, they're going to gate the road way back almost to the start. Well, right past the last house that's in there, probably a half a kilometer. They're not going to let the general public use the road where a lot of people go trout fishing, what, in whatever, right? So I would like an answer on what the department's intent is for that road.
Okay.
And I'm sure Alec and Ronnie Dontrama will be a little upset because they use it a lot for bird watching.
We have a motion on the floor. Are there any other questions or comments on it? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary. Motion carried. Okay, thank you. And number seven, correspondence and for information, we're going to put seven A there. We're going to, the, we're going to talk about the flag policy. So. Councilor Diggden, yes, it was you who had brought it up. Okay, go ahead, Councilor Diggden.
Thank you Deputy Warden. Okay, so I guess maybe as counselors, we may have. as counselors, we may have overlooked the flag policy. I'm not sure, but a little while ago, the Acadian flag was taken down on one of the flag poles at the municipality. And it was, I believe it was the African heritage flag that was put up, which was, we were all in agreement for, and we do get quite a few requests to fly flags different times of the year from, from groups or individuals. So the Acadian flag, like I say, was taken down. We are in a recognized Acadian municipality. It's been recognized by the provincial government. We also have a school board that has a lot of Acadian people that come from this area. And I honestly believe whether we even have to buy another flag pole for special occasions for flags that, that groups want flown. I honestly believe that the three main flags that we should be flying at the municipality of our guile would be the Canadian flag, the Nova Scotia flag, and the Acadian flag myself. And like I say, I know, maybe we've overlooked it on the policy. I know we've all voted on the policy and passed the policy, but I think now's our time to correct it. And if the rest of the council, maybe I might be the only one favored here this evening by him, that's all right too. I, I'll, I'll have brought it up. I had quite a few people call me when they noticed the Acadian flag was taken down, and there were some correspondents sent to Calvin, Counselor Dontrum on, Counselor Bork on this issue. And I said I would be bringing it up at the meeting, and I'm bringing it up here this evening.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? Go ahead, Counselor Sarek.
I would like further to Counselor Digtin. He brings such a great point. Kind of made, I guess we voting on that policy, kind of made a, in my opinion, right now, kind of a boom without that I, I don't know how I missed it, but I did, and I'm, I'm with Counselor Digtin that, you know, the Acadian flag should be flown there. We are, after all, we were just renamed again in the Acadian constituency for the province of Nova Scotia. So I really believe that the staff should look at the policy and bring this back up, or bring, after they do some work on it. I don't know if we need a motion or just what we need, but for staff to look at it and bring us some recommendation to what council, if they're in favor of this, to what we should do, how, how do we change it? Thank you.
Counselor Dontrum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would also, to add to Keith's comment, or Counselor Sarek's comments, I would like for staff, if possible, to look into how much an extra, how much a flagpole costs and bring us those, those numbers back. So, so we can see, you know, what the cost is and follow up with, with, with this, with our, with, and, you know, for our policy. So, thank you.
Counselor Sonia.
Thank you. Do we know, we probably do know the different, how many different flags are we requested to fly, fly in the course of a year?
I've asked that question as well. Do we have information on that, Scott or Kyle? Do we know that yet? Go ahead Kyle.
Oh, this is, this is a new policy. So, you know, this is new for everybody. This is in its first year. The, the cost of a new flagpole installation is between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars. I can tell you that right now. But yeah, I, we don't know the request. I believe this is our second request, I believe, since the, the policy's been in place. So we're awaiting details on provincial protocol right now. From what we understand, the province is revamping some of their flag protocols as we speak. So we should have an update on that. We were hoping that this might get pushed to the next meeting to have a further update on that, that stuff for you guys.
Right. I did read that somewhere in an email that we are still awaiting some information on flag protocol. Now, it's, I, I, I hear all the conversation, and I think it's kind of funny how everybody interprets things differently, right? I read the flag policy, and I remember reading that we would take down the Acadian flag, and I thought, how respectful is that? To me, it showed respect. I, I think about we're in, in times of trying to be inclusive and invite everybody in, and by saying, we're okay with taking our flag down to put yours up, to me, it showed respect. And I was really proud of that, actually. I, I knew we would be doing that, and I was not opposed to it. So for me, I'm good with the way the policy is, because when I think about how many flags we might put up there, I went back and reread the policy again after this conversation. And so a flag goes up for two weeks. So if we put up the African Nova Scotian flag, it's for two weeks. So I tried to think about how many different flags there might be over the course of a year. I can't see there being five. I tried to, you know, think of the different ones. So if we're talking ten weeks of the year at a cost of twelve to fifteen thousand dollars to put up another flagpole, I'm not sure, I feel like that's justifiable, that's, but that's my opinion, and I don't feel like I'm any less proud of my Acadian heritage by taking down that, that flag for two weeks to put up somebody else's. I feel like it's a sign of respect and a sign of inclusivity, and not everybody in our community, not everybody in our municipality is Acadian. We do have, as, as Counselor Digtin said, a strong Acadian population, but we have a lot of people who are English. We do have some Mi'kmaq people as well. That's my opinion on it. I don't think that if we come to a point where we vote honestly to change it, I, I don't think I would vote to change it. I'm, I'm happy with the way the flag policy is. I feel like it's really inclusive and really respectful. And that's, that's how I feel. And, and I, I did go back and reread it again, and it's, it just, it's interesting because people interpret it differently, right? Some people feel like it was, we shouldn't take it down because of our pride, and to me, I was like, wow, we're being really inclusive here, and we're taking steps forward, and I was really proud of that. Go ahead, Counselor Digtin.
Thank you. Well, I, I guess we can debate it, you know, after we get some figures maybe for, you know, or the, but I look at it the other way. People had a fight, and that to have this area recognized as an Acadian area again, where they had lost that for a while. I myself am not Acadian. And that, so I, you know, here I am trying to push this, you know, for the Acadian people here this evening. And we all know what a lot of Acadians have been through over the years. And I honestly believe as a sign of respect, and that for it being an Acadian community and a rec, or an Acadian municipality and recognized as an Acadian municipality, we should be flying that flag fifty-two weeks old of the year. Whether or not we put up a less expensive flagpole, and that's another thing, you know, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. Looking at that and looking at some of the places we've spent twelve to fifteen thousand dollars as a council or lost twelve to fifteen thousand dollars, I would gladly back it up one hundred percent to see that Acadian flag flying again, fifty-two weeks old of the year in the municipality of our guile. Thank you.
You're welcome. Then again, those minority groups had to fight too. Like, it is, it's a debate back and forth. It could go back and forth all night, but they had to debate, and I, that's what made me proud is that we're recognizing that, that we're able to say, okay, you are part of us as well. And we're going to, we're gonna take a step, and we're gonna let you fly your flag as well. That's just, that's how I interpreted it. Counselor Sonia.
You make a great point. You make a great point. You almost make me feel proud by just saying what you said. At the same time, Glenn has a point as well. So to, to keep the flag flying, if we get another flag, does it have to be the same quality flagpole? If we're only gonna fly each flag for two weeks, does it have to be a ten, fifteen thousand dollar flagpole? I mean, is, is, is it an insult to have a less expensive flagpole?
And I think that's part of all the, the information gathering we can get, right? What are some of the costs for flagpoles? How many flags? That's something I wondered. How many, how many requests do we get? And it's hard to know because it's a new policy, but if you, you know, I'd like to know roughly how many other flags we might, we might possibly get requests for. Go ahead, Counselor Sarek.
I guess Deputy Warden, I remember when I first came on council, there were so many requests for flag flying. I, I think we stopped, maybe Richard can remembers that. We had to stop, we, we made a policy not to fly any, any more flags. We only had one flagpole at the old municipal office. So we had to stop. I think Calvin might remember that too. There was a lot of requests. So we finally canceled flying any flags for anybody, just to make a point.
Counselor Budrow.
Just a comment. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment. Before we start jumping to gun blind buying flagpoles, let's wait, like Kyle mentioned, the, the flag protocol, and we'll take it from there. That's, that's my opinion.
I agree.
You agree. Anybody, anybody else would like to speak on this? Go ahead, Counselor Digtin.
And by all means, we'll wait and go from there. But my last, I guess you people have known me by now, when I've got something, you know that I wanna say, I will say it, and I still maintain that we should be flying an Acadian flag at the municipality of our guile fifty-two weeks old of the year. Thank you, and we'll see how discussions go at a later date on this.
Okay. So we're okay with deferring this one as well to the next, once we have more information? So can I have somebody make a motion that we defer this one until the next meeting? Thank you, Counselor Budrow, seconded by Counselor Digtin. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary, motion carried. Okay.
Good discussion. Thank you.
I was just about to say that. You said it. Good. Thank you. Financial requests, number H. We have the Mariner Center, Mariner Center fundraising RFP, top-up request. There is an attachment of two pages. Let me see my quick review of notes. So basically, in our last Mariner Center meeting, as you know, we all, the three units had decided to put a, a pot of money together for basically expenses. When things came up for the Mariner Center Expansion Committee, we wanted to be able to make decisions, not huge decisions, but smaller financial decisions without having to go to each council every single time and delay the process. So we had all put money in, and there was about a hundred, there was a hundred thousand dollars that was put in for, for discretionary spending, as well as some of the, the bridge funding. Sorry. And anyway, we have come to a point where thirty thousand six hundred of that money has been spent, leaving not quite enough for what we need for the fundraising RFP. So the fundraising RFP has gone through, and they have narrowed it down to affirm that they would like to be able to hire to begin the process of phase one of the fundraising. So phase one is going out and deciding what is the market of fundraising in our area? So how much are we going to be able to potentially fundraise for this project? They wanna be able to start thinking about, like, what is the quantity of, of our fundraising capacity? So that's what phase one does. But we don't quite have enough money. So we came, we couldn't approve, so we're a little bit stalled. We haven't been able to approve that, that firm because we don't quite have enough money. So if each unit, the request is for another twenty thousand dollars for each unit to put towards in that, that financial pot again, to be able to cover the cost of the, the fundraising RFP. I believe, I don't know, am I allowed to say the figure out in public? Those are things I'm never sure of. I can, for what the fundraising RFP, I wrote it down. It is.
Has, has it been awarded yet?
No.
I don't think you should.
Okay.
I'd be, I'd be careful with that one.
Yeah. Don't, don't mention, yeah.
Okay.
That's not what I thought you were asking. I thought you were asking about the twenty thousand.
Oh, no. I, yeah, because I, I'm not, I'm, I'm never sure about those things. So I'm not gonna mention that because it hasn't been awarded yet. So basically, what we're looking for is, and if you look budget impacts, so we're looking at the end of the fiscal year, so likely this would be deferred until the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year budget. So there's a couple of recommended motions that we approve the request for the additional twenty thousand dollars for the bridge funding to pay for the firm, or we can deny the request. And there's a couple of recommendations there that staff has put together. Are there any questions or comments on that? We're just kind of stuck. We're stalled because we just ran out of a little bit of money. Go ahead, Warden Muse.
What this money will, will, it will be for is to, to, it doesn't mean that it's gonna all get spent either. It's just that, that, that the, the committee can, can spend X number of dollars from whatever is, is allotted by the municipalities, okay? But the three units. And so like, like Deputy Warden said, we don't wanna come to council every time we wanna spend five thousand dollars. It just doesn't make sense. And what we did last time when we went with a hundred thousand was to, to, to authorize the committee to spend whatever they needed up to that hundred thousand. Well, the, the RFP is gonna bring more of the one, the, the the hundred thousand that they, that, that was allotted. So with the twenty thousand, that's, if, if, if all three, it's not, it's not just twenty thousand for the three. It's twenty thousand each, right? And that'll just bring the pot up again to give, to give the committee access to money without going to council all the time. Doesn't mean it's, it's all gonna get spent because there's money in there. The, the, it, it, it won't take the entire twenty thousand to pay for the, to pay for the RFP. But there could be other expenses. We didn't wanna just bring it up to, to the amount that it needs to pay that, and then something else comes up, then we have to come back. So it's just to, to put money in the pot again, so that the committee has a, a, the opportunity to, to, if an expense comes up that they can pay for it without coming to council, up to the amount that's in the pot.
Thank you. Counselor Sarek.
Maybe this has been mentioned, I'm not sure, but I'll just add, add it back in if it was, that this would be coming out of next year's, but in our budget.
It is. Yes.
Go ahead, Counselor Digtin.
Thank you. I, I guess right from the start, I've been asking for transparency with this project. And I'm not saying I'm against this project by no means. I've never, ever said that. But we had the meeting on the seventh of June twenty twenty-one, Resolution of Council number twenty twenty-one oh six. And whereas the municipality of our guile is committed to public engagement, to further inform our residents and the associated costs and benefits of this project, I don't believe we've ever, ever done that yet. And I honestly believe that the residents deserve to know more about this project, the cost that may be associated with this project, project, the tax increase that may be associated with this project. And I'm not by no means saying it is a bad project, by no means. But at the same time, I just feel as though we should be putting this out to the people before it gets too far. And like I said before at this council, I was told on the doorsteps when I was running as a council, for council, that I'd be the same as other politicians, that we'd do what we wanted to do, and the people would find about it, out about it afterwards. And I don't honestly believe that we, as a council, has done the public engagement part yet, and to inform our residents of the associated cost. I don't even know, we know what the associated cost of our, this project is yet. We had figures back a year and a half ago, two years ago, and that or so. But now picture with all this COVID going on and how projects have increased over the years, the cost of projects. What this thirty million dollar project, where it could be right now? Like, I'm, that's all I'm saying. And, you know, this, when it comes time to vote, and there's a motion made this evening, I will be definitely voting in favor of this motion. But at the same time, I honestly believe it is time as a council, and that as a municipality, that we start informing. and that there is a municipality that we start informing the residents about this project and the associated costs that may go along with this project. Thank you.
Can you clarify for me, Counselor Diggan, how you feel would be the best way to do that? Because I, I feel like we've given some information and I mean, a project of this magnitude, we've put in an application. I think we've been clear about the amount of money we've committed as a council. We have a budget. We've said we're not going over that budget. Like, I just, I'm not quite sure which piece you feel we're missing. How, how better could we do this?
Well, there's, there's residents right now that don't even know about this project. I was asked about it last Saturday night at a little shop down here in Pumnico by a resident. And now, again, you know, I know sometimes the people have to be informed as well, you know, and have to look for information. But I, I just feel as though they could be better informed. We could, I don't know how many, how many times it's been on our newsletters and how much it could cost and how much the tax increase may happen. And according to what I've been told by our CAO, that it will definitely be raised, it'll be cause for the taxes to increase, you know, to pay for this project, how long that we're looking at borrowing the money over and stuff like that. I just feel as though we fell a bit short of informing our residents about this project. You know, I know they, we've been saying, well, we don't know how much it would cost us to operate it here, to run it a year and all that. So we're not sure. But at the same time, there's other areas around that are running facilities like this. And, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel. There must be, you know, a building this size and a pool that size. There must be some figures that we can say, here's what's going to go along with, with running that, of that operation as well.
I'm not sure who had their hand up first. Was it Ward News? Okay, Ward News, go ahead.
Okay. I know we didn't have what you might call public consultation where we went into different villages and whatever. There are more people out there that know, this has been in the news, that we're looking at an expansion and that we're involved, okay? A lot of people know what's going on. When it comes to figures, we have a figure and it's been published. We're looking at a thirty million dollar project where we've, we've said that, that the municipal, and not just our municipality, but, but that the, we've agreed to cover ten million dollars of the thirty million project. So that's out there. As far as knowing what the project is going to cost, we have no idea until it goes to tender. And if it goes to tender and it comes out at forty million, then there's going to, going to have to be a decision made by our councils, the three units. Okay. Now we're looking at a forty million dollar project. What do we do with it? Do we go or don't we? If we, if we can build something for thirty million, I think it's a go. If we have to go over, I'm not sure that, that it's going to have to come back for discussion. What are we going to do with this, depending on how much over it goes? Now, when we had public consultations, and I'm going to go back to when we did the building, we had public consultation. I think the amount of people that attended the public consultations is a very, very, very low percentage of our population, right? We have to agree to that. So I think at this point, there's certainly probably people there that don't know, whether they don't listen to the news, whether they don't read the Vanguard, whether, whatever, for whatever reason, they're not on Facebook. There, there's going to be people, we can have public consultations and there'll be just as many people that don't know, okay? Right now, we're committed. And you said something before we go too far. I think we've, we're at a point now that if we can get the funding from the, from the federal and provincial government and that we can stay within our budget, I think it's a go. I can't see whether we go to the public or not. As far as knowing what we need for a loan, what we need for how we're going to get the money, I think that's up in the air until we know what the project is going to cost as well. So I, I don't think, I don't think that, that I don't think that the public is blind to what's going on. And I'm not saying that everybody knows. You know, no matter what you do, you're not ever, ever going to get everybody to, to, to be aware of everything that's going on. So I am comfortable with where we are at this point. Once we know we've got a project, then yes, then, then we'll have more figures. We'll have something to bring to the public. And that's just my, my view. Right here, I mean, we're asking for twenty thousand. But we haven't made a motion, by the way. No, no motion has been made on this yet. No. So anyway, we're, we're just, you know, we're into, we're into it now where we can't just back out because, because we don't want to give another twenty thousand dollars, I don't think. I, I think that would be ridiculous to, to look at that. And we're still going and we feel that there's a better chance, if we can go with this fundraising, that it might strengthen the fact that, that it might give us a better chance to be, to be, to qualify for the funding. Anyway, I, I, I know what you're saying, Counselor Diggan. We did say that. And it never really happened. And all of a sudden, we were into it. You're right. You're absolutely right. We didn't go, we didn't go to different villages and say, this is what we're going to be doing and whatever. But, but again, at this point, I think, I think we're in it. We're in it to our, to our eyes with this part of the project, okay? So anyway, that's all I want to say.
The funding stream came along so quickly when we had to put in that application. It was, it was unheard of how quickly that went. And the other thing is that project is a thirty million dollar project, but it's completely contingent on the fact that we need to have sixteen million from the federal government and we need to have at least three point nine million from the province before we move forward. We don't get that. We can't move forward. We've committed thirty point six six percent. Our, that's our percentage of that ten million dollars. That's what we anticipate. But, but beyond that, like, that's, all those pieces have to fall together. They, we can't do this without those other two pieces of funding. Kyle, go ahead. I think I have a list going on. I have your name next, Ted, and I have Richard after that. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just want to respond to Glenn a little bit on that part. I think that we, the CAO's recommendations and attachments to the minutes of the last meeting clearly said that there was little to no tax implications on, on what was being committed to already. So I just wanted to clarify that. But we have given you lots of information on similar facilities, I believe. If there's more that you're looking for, let me know. But we, I think we included maybe three or five-year numbers for three different facilities that are similar. We can't use their build costs because, as you said, the costs have gone up considerably since those were built. So we're leaning on EXP's expertise on that. So that's, that's where we lean for that. That's why we hire the experts. I think that's, that's where we have to put our confidence in them to do that. But as far as, yeah, that, that part goes, I think the public engagement I had hands-on from the curling side, I think they did consult with a lot of the users of the different facilities before making some of the decisions. From the curling club side, I had, I was part of those discussions. But I think that was probably done probably out of time restraints. But yeah, as far as finding numbers on similar facilities, I think they've been provided. If there's anything else you'd like to know, let us know. And yeah, the recommendation would be that there was little to no tax implications compared to our operating grants that we already provide now.
Thank you. Ted, I have you next. Counselor Sonja.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. To follow up on the same line of talk here. I think if anybody except thinks that we're going to have a cool budget that balances, I think you're wrong. I think anytime you, we've looked at huge projects, big projects, whether it's ours or not, at the end, they always cost more. Whether it's inflation, whether it's the time, I certainly agree with having a, an expansion center. I totally, I voted for it and I still will. But let's not kid ourselves here. We might give a number today and it's going to be inflated tomorrow. So what, what we accurately quote today is not right tomorrow, is what I'm trying to say. I can't see this being any cheaper or spending less than what we are predicted because I think every project that I've seen in town in the last forty years have always cost more. So we got to be prepared for that. And the public should know that, that even if we give them numbers now, they're not going to be the exact numbers they're going to get when it's all said and done. So it's a matter of commitment. I agree. And I think expediency, to be expeditious with moving this along will give us, will probably cost us less. The longer it takes, the more it's going to cost. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Counselor Donaldson, but I don't think I see him. His internet might have booted him out. Counselor Doctor Mau.
Yeah, my question is, I'm just wondering if the twenty thousand, if we did agree to support the twenty thousand, is that part of our thirty point six six percent of the ten million? Does that get added into the amount or is that a separate?
Effort. It's a separate act. Good question. Any, any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Saret. I don't think you've got a chance to speak on it yet.
I, I wish that we had gone and had some meetings. Also, I honestly, I, I was, I so much enjoyed the way we did the administration building, like the warden spoke about earlier. You know, that was done so well, going to each community. We had close to a hundred people in Amira's Hill. What I had from my district, it was one of the biggest ones that was attended. And the people had good questions. There was something that was brought up and we put the numbers right on the board to what we thought they were at that time. They obviously changed, but that these people kind of had an idea, they had questions. It kept them in the loop. And I think that's what Counselor Diggan is trying to say. Also, I'm not saying everything, but that's part of it. And I agree with that. Nothing wrong with going and showing your cards and showing that, you know, my big thing is being transparent with my district. I always have tried. Maybe I failed maybe once on one thing, but that's basically it. The rest was basically pretty transparent. And it never hurts to go and sit down and talk to people, have your CAO with those numbers, as Kyle said earlier, what we had, we had great numbers to make the decision at our last meeting, to be an owner. Those numbers were fabulous. And I wouldn't mind to bring that to my district and show them, here's, here's what it is. Here's what we're looking at. Here are possibilities, but you know, and so, yeah, I will vote for this. No question. The transparency is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Diggan.
Thank you. Yeah, the only thing I was going to say, we'll, we'll wait to see, you know, and if I'm wrong, I'll say I'm wrong. We'll wait to see if the taxes, Mr. Boudreaux feels as though maybe the taxes will not go up over this. I feel as though somewhere's along the line, the taxes, whether it be for this, this project or trying to maintain what we do for the residents of Argyle municipality, somewhere's along the line. I believe that there's going to have to be some taxes go up. But anyway, like I said, I am going to vote for it. And the only other thing, and I know, and the only reason I'm going to ask you, Madam Deputy Warden, is because I know you're the president, the chairman of this. Again, and I don't know if you people have a, a mail out as to when each meeting is going to be and a Zoom link. Again, I'd ask, I guess, if I can be put on that link again. Because again, it's hard to get to some of these meetings when you don't know about them or when you only know, you know, half an hour before these meetings. And, you know, I know we're all open to full transparency. So, yeah, I'd like to, at least then too, with the residents, if I do set in on these meetings, if I can, and I do enjoy setting in on them, if the residents of my district ask me something about it, at least I'm better informed as to make, to give them an answer. Thank you.
Definitely. Any other questions or comments on that before we make our motion? Because we haven't made a motion yet. I saw, I did see that Counselor Doctor Mau, can we, could we possibly put something in our newsletter? So that's a comment, you know, could we maybe put some figures, even if we, you know, start putting out information about the cost of the project or put it, I know it's been in, I know it's been in the media. It definitely has been in the media, but if we could just put something in our newsletter. And I see that Scott has said we could consider that for our next one. So that's a, that's a recommendation, valid recommendation. So we.
And I mentioned that before Mr. Doctor Mau, that the Counselor Doctor Mau put it, I'd mentioned maybe our newsletter. So, yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Doctor Mau, Counselor.
Okay, so we have, go ahead, Counselor Saret.
I'd like to make a motion that I got to read this just a sec. I'm almost there. Move that council approved twenty thousand bridge funded Mariner Center Expansion Committee to fund the fundraising campaign and that these funds be budgeted, be budgeted in the 2022, 23 fiscal year.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that? Thank you, Counselor Diggan. Any other questions or comments? We already kind of did that. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary, motion carried. I feel a little bit bad that we lost Richard. Okay. Get back to the agenda. Number nine, agenda topics for next meeting, notice of motion by counselors. Does anybody have anything they want to bring forward for that meeting? Okay. Yep. Go ahead, Counselor Doctor Mau.
I guess just what we had talked about when it came to the, for curling for the next meeting, just make sure that's on there. And with the other projects that are coming, I think maybe this is Saret enlightened us on that the next time. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Saret.
I would like to, to ask, I guess this is to the interim CAO. If we could get staff, maybe this is not a proper time, although the CEO is coming in next week. If we could look at the funding to grants for organizations. And what, what I'm particularly looking at is we've been having the same number for years and years. And the problem is with everything that's costing so much more, you know, to COVID nineteen and it is costing more, these grants have stayed at the same amount, the same for the festivals. And that, and I was wondering if, if staff could, could take a moment, you know, maybe not for next meeting, but before we set our budget, to see if we could look at, at the grants of these festivals, especially the festival. They've been stuck with a certain amount of fifteen hundred dollars every year and the cost has been going up. I think it'd be prudent to just have a look at it to see, you know, is there justification to maybe bump it up to two thousand or to seventeen fifty or whatever the recommendation could come about or stay the same. But certainly, you know, I've been asked this by a few people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We have question period. Were there any questions from the public? Nothing. I just want to see if I missed anything here. Okay. Whoops. Sometimes you press a button and you don't know what you're pressing. Okay. Next, we have our in-camera portion of the meeting. So can I have somebody make a motion to go in camera? Thank you, Counselor Boudreaux. Do I have a second here? Thank you, Counselor Doctor Mau. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Contrary, motion carried. So we will move to in-camera.